Good morning, all. It being nine o'clock on August 28th, I'm going to call this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. We have one case. We have a lot of people here. I'm going to ask that anyone who wants to speak on the case, who's not directly involved as an applicant, please sign up over here at the table. We're going to limit comments to one minute because of the number of people here. Okay, I don't think that all of us want to be here all day. So, let's get going with the roll call of officers, please.
Commissioner Uranga?
Commissioner Lear?
Here.
Commissioner Garcia?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Costa?
Present.
Vice Chair Bob Zerniak? Chair Bill Sarjes?
Here. Also, just a reminder, please turn off any electronic devices so we don't have to listen to a lot of extra noise. Approval or changes to the agenda? A motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as stated.
Motion by Commissioner Zerniak, second by Commissioner Costa to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Approval of the minutes, regular meeting.
I move for approval of the minutes of August 14th.
I'll second that.
Okay, approval of the minutes. Motion by Commissioner Fisher, second by Commissioner Lear. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Old business? None? Ma'am, we'll get to you in a minute, okay? In regards to...
If it's in regards to the case... No, she can't hear you.
If it's in regard to the case, no, wait a minute.
Mr. Chairman, she's saying she can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. Can you hear me now? I try to keep this close and they give me a heads up over there, but I do tend to speak softly.
Mr. Chairman, in regards, I'd like to just note that I am already in the wine business, just so that the board is aware of that.
Any other disclosures? Okay, hearing none, let's move on. New business, case number Z 25013. Applicant for zone change on a D1L. Mr. Casillas.
Please raise your right hand. State your name and address for the record.
Albert Casillas, 845 North Motel Boulevard.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commission. Members of the public, welcome today. Our case for today is going to be a zone change request. The owner of the property is Mr. Scott Banister, who was present here, as well as applicant Stephen Green. This property is located there at the entrance of Picacho Hills. Proposed addresses are 1050-1051, Picacho Hills Drive, Las Cruces, New Mexico. Existing zoning on the property, it's a D1L, low-density residential limited zone, which is basically your site-built homes. The request is to go on a nine-acre parcel and a 9.35 acres out of a 73-acre parcel that are both zoned D1L, to take those two parcels and go to a C2 zoning district. This is for the development of a winery and related uses. When we look at the location map here, we see the outline of both parcels. This is Picacho right here, or Highway 70. This is the entrance to Picacho Hills, known as Picacho Hills Drive. So, we basically have the nine acres here on the west side of that drive, and we have nine acres on the right side. So, it's not the entire parcel that's being highlighted here. When we look at the aerial photo, we can kind of see what those boundaries are going to be. Basically, where you see that ditch right here, that's the northern boundary of that property on the right side. That's being proposed to change to a C2. So, basically, this would be the limits of the zone change request right here. So, the request is to use approximately 18 acres from D1L to a C2. Some of the proposed uses related to this winery include the winery itself. It's going to be known as Picacho Avenue Winery in Bistro. They're going to have some covered outdoor event space, Sunset Promenade, an event center, La Vista Event Center. So, those first bullet points right there, that's what's being proposed on the east side of Picacho Hills. On the west side, we have what are going to be the storage facilities for the wine production and the storage. So, they're basically dividing up the operation into two portions. On the east side of Picacho Hills, you have the winery itself, and on the west side, you're going to have the storage facilities and production. Here's the area of the rezone. Basically, it goes up to that ditch that we saw on the aerials. Conceptual site plan of what the winery is going to be looking like. And just zooming in here, we have the winery in Bistro, Sunset Promenade, and the event center that's being proposed. Here, we see the zoning map of the surrounding the subject parcel. Of course, along Picacho Drive, we see that there's a lot of commercial, already as commercial uses that are established, right adjacent to this property. We have that I-1. Next to it, there's a C3, a couple more commercial areas and industrial areas. And then, as you drive up to the Picacho Hills neighborhood, everything's a D3 out there. And we have that C1 node that's there. That was a zone change that was done back, I believe, 2019, under the ETZ. So, about 25 years ago. So, before 2017, when we adopted the Unified Development Code, this property was still zoned residential. After the EDC, that's when it got that D1L designation. Both properties are currently assessed as agricultural land by the county assessor's office. And access to the property will be from Picacho Hills Drive, which is paved, county-maintained, 80-foot right-of-way. Or it could also be from West Picacho Avenue, which is a paved New Mexico DOT right-of-way. So, per the land use matrix, and I think I included a screenshot of that on your packet, per our code, where can wine tasting rooms or wineries occur right now under our current zoning designations? With the existing zoning that's there, the applicant could have applied for a special-use permit, which would limit him to that specific use. That's the thing about special-use permits. You're only allowed to do what you're applying for. So, he could have taken that route with the special-use permit. The only issue with that is that special-use permits are typically capped. It's in our code that says that if a building permit's not submitted within a year, then that special-use permit goes away. And if there's ever plans for expansion or anything like that, then you have to come back and resubmit for another special-use permit. So, that's one option. They're also allowed under our mixed-use zoning designation categories. They're allowed under C1. They're allowed under C2, which is what the applicant's seeking today, C3, or any of the industrial uses. So, a couple of options there for the applicant. And basically, this is just a screenshot of our code. When it comes to use zones, the D1s and the C1s and the I1s, you have the S for special-use permit, and then P for permitted, under all those other zoning designations. A little bit more of a background on this. Back in 2010, there was an attempt by the 4B Trust, Julio Goss being the agent, to take on a zone change request. So, they were basically seeking more, higher-density residential, as well as a C3 designation for commercial uses. This zone change back in 2010 was denied by the ETZ. So, it never went to the ETA as an appeal. So, after the first hearing, they basically just withdrew their application. But this is basically what that zone change was 15 years ago. They did have that commercial node here at the intersection of Picacho Avenue and Picacho Hills Drive, but everything behind it was pretty much going to be a little bit higher-density, ER7, single, multifamily homes. And just by going through the minutes, reading what had happened back then, I believe that during the hearing, they withdrew the zone changes for the residential and multifamily requests, and they moved forward with the commercial one. But ultimately, that one was denied at the ETZ level. So, just a little bit of history in the area. And that's just more of what they were proposing back then. So, this aerial is just a couple, just a shot of what's existing out there. This is the subject property, which currently sits under an ag use. We saw on the zoning map that to the right of that, you had all that area that was zoned industrial, which it's still being used for ag. I believe these were zoned commercial as well. Here, I'm standing on Picacho Hills Drive, just looking south towards that intersection. One of the shots here from Picacho Avenue and Picacho Hills Drive. Looking back north onto Picacho Hills Drive. So, basically, from here, we have one of the nine-acre parcels here, and then the other nine acres are going to be on the other side. And here, I'm standing on the northwestern corner of what would be that eastern nine acres, just looking south. This is a shot of Picacho Hills Drive. And now, I'm standing on the west side of that road, standing on the northeastern corner of the other nine acres. So, this would be where they're proposing on doing the production and the storage. And this would be the site of the winery right here. And then, just looking north, north of that eastern nine acres, and then looking north onto the community of Picacho Hills here, from the west side. So, for our zone change evaluation requirements, these are the sections of the code that we have to look at. Area of notification. So, even though the zone change is just for the nine acres, because those properties are not split yet, we had to use the entire 70-plus acres as the buffer for our notification requirements. So, just through that, a factor, more people were notified of the zone change request. A total of 52 letters of notification were mailed out. There are several letters in opposition that were received. They're all included in your packet. I forwarded some of the letters that were received afterwards, after I sent out the link. So, you guys have copies of that, too, as well. The legal ads were posted on the Sun News, signs were posted on the property, and the agenda was posted on the county website. So, the applicant, they're not proposing any residential development for this zone change. Population's not going to be affected because it's for a commercial use, so there's no impact to demographics. Traffic flows and impacts. Driveways will be located on Picacho Hills Drive, which is a county-maintained right-of-way. Picacho Hills Drive is classified as a minor arterial by the MPO. If access is to be from West Picacho Avenue, New Mexico DOT driveway, permit is required, and West Picacho Avenue is classified as a principal arterial. This zone change will allow the applicant to operate a winery and associated uses. Water is available from Doñana Mutual Domestic. Wastewater will be handled by an approved septic tank out there. There is sufficient infrastructure capacity for the proposed use. There's been no evidence submitted that there are endangered or rare species of animal and plant life in the area. Impact. So, the property has direct access to Picacho Hills Drive. It's currently being used for agricultural purposes. We saw the aerials out there. Properties along West Picacho Avenue are zoned commercial and industrial. Existing businesses and uses within approximately half a mile radius include Picacho West, meaning an RV storage. You have Wild West Express. There's the Faith Community Church, Las Cruces Concrete Construction, Premier RV Boat Storage, RKJ Equipment. There's the Fair Acres Elementary School, Fair Acres Baptist Church. So, those are just some of the non-residential uses that are out there. If approved, the buffer landscaping, road improvements, applicable fire, life safety, and building services requirements will have to be met during the building permitting process. And if approved, the applicant will have to implement best management practices that are identified, noted, and included in the reviews and conditions required for the zone change and during the building permit application. So, at least when it comes to Section 203, Point D, Point 1, we believe that the applicant meets that section of the code. We also believe that the zone change request does meet the requirements of meeting the Plan 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and it's not in conflict with the following goals and actions. So, goal G2.2, ensure regulation supporting the plan requirements, safeguarding and extending desirable neighborhood character, open space, developing in existing locations with existing infrastructure, and extend as necessary. We believe that it meets that goal. And also, goal 6.7, which is to support regional small-scale businesses, including agriculture. When it comes to a change of conditions, so we do believe that there is evidence of a change of conditions, making the zone change reasonably necessary to protect the public interest. So, the applicant does say, this is coming from the applicant. "With the Mesia Valley's growing reputation for wine production, this project represents an exciting opportunity to build on our region's agricultural heritage and expand its recognition as a destination for wine tourism." That's a statement from the applicant. The zone change, this is from Saffa, "We do believe that it is appropriate as a zone change request will promote the agritourism that has developed in Doñana County, the growing popularity of agritourism, further enhanced by the livability principles incorporated in the COM Plan." So, those can be considered as a change of conditions, making the zone change necessary. So those can be considered as a change of conditions, making the zone change necessary. With the adoption of the EDC back in 2017, there were other wineries in the region that got designated with the C2 zoning designation. La Minia Winery, Sombrantillo Winery, were some of the existing wineries that received that C2 designation. Rio Grande Winery was a little bit different because those were within the ETZ originally. They got a zone change to I2 because back then, that was the only zoning designation that would allow for wineries and wine production. And then a couple of years ago, they came back and requested to downzone to a C2, but also be able to extend some of the property that they had vacant, so they could accommodate a future RV park, which still hasn't been built. In 2023, up by the KOA, and these are just some of the other zone changes that have occurred along West Picacho. The most recent one was the one for the fencing company next to the KOA, which went from D2L to C3. And then just right up the road here, Throat Punch Performance, they also extended the remainder of their D2L property that they had behind their business to a C2. The zone change is not intended to cover and perfect the previous defective ordinance or to correct mistakes. And we don't believe it's a spot zone, you know, just based on the existing businesses and the existing zoning designations that are there. So we do believe it will be a benefit to the community by allowing additional commercial uses such as a winery and related uses. So these are our staff findings. It's pretty much basically what I, you know, what I stated on the previous slides. We do believe that the zone change meets the requirements of the, you know, Section 203D, decisional criteria for proper zone change. We don't think that the request to a C2 would be considered a spot zone. And we don't believe that this request is in conflict with the Comprehensive Plan. So, you know, based on the findings of facts, staff analysis, agency comments, when it comes to case number C25013, we are recommending, staff is recommending approval to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And this is to go from a D1L to a C2 to allow the development of a winery and related uses. Of course, the PNZ can approve this zone change request. You guys can conditionally approve the request or deny the zone change request. And, you know, just as a reminder, any decision that's made here at the PNZ today can be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. So with that said, that's the end of our presentation. We do stand for comments. And the applicant and his representatives, they're both here.
Thank you, Albert. Questions of staff?
Phil, I just, Albert, I just want to be clear about something. He'll need two access permits, won't he? One for each side of the road?
If the access is going to be off of Picacho Hills Drive, yes. There will be two driveway permits that would have to be issued by county engineering. Some of the comments that were received by New Mexico DOT, of course, is that if access is proposed off of Picacho Avenue, they will need a driveway permit from them.
Okay.
Other questions of staff? So you're done. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Scott Bannister, 680 South Fair Acres Road.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commission, staff, thank you. Just wanted to say just a few words. Thank you for your time. Appreciate allowing me to speak. I'm hoping, you know, that this crowd that we've gotten are here for information and, you know, more concerned about what's going in. And once they understand and get the information, I think it'll be a real positive impact. I'm a native New Mexican, been here my whole life. Born in Artesia, been here the last 42 years. I live just within a mile of the exit, this location. So I'm very, very aware of, you know, what's going in. I want to make sure that we're good neighbors, to continue to be good neighbors as we have been. I put a lot of thought into this, you know, whenever we were looking at it. There's commercial all around us, there's industrial next to us. I considered industrial, but that would scare everybody because, oh my gosh, what's going in? It could be, you know, all these different, you know, heavy uses and all that kind of stuff. So that's why we chose to do the C2. I think it is very consistent with what is surrounding us and what our intentions are. I've been in the grape-growing business for the last four years. I bought Don Paps' five acres over here on Fair Acres Road. And then we tried it out, loved it, loved the people, loved the business. So I bought 40 more acres, and we planted 10 already. And we've got ambitions to go ahead and plant 10 every year. It's about $20,000 an acre to plant, so we have to kind of spread it out a little bit. But, so, as we expand the growing of the wine, we want to try and have as much, you know, control over the, you know, every aspect of the production. So right now, we're just selling to Noisy Water and Sheen Wineries in Albuquerque and have just fallen in love with it. So I bought this property about, I don't know, four or five years ago, just to farm it. And I really feel like this would be a fantastic location. We've got good interstate access. El Paso is a huge market. They would be coming down. There's not a lot of dining, retail services in Picacho Hills. I know where the Santa Fe Grill is right now. It's just been a constant struggle for any business to stay up there because there's just not enough alternatives. People have to come for one particular restaurant in order to drive any business. And it's just almost impossible to be successful. So I think we would really help, you know, bring a little more variety of business, to offer more goods and services to the community. What I envision on this east side is we want to build a nice facility where we have a tasting room. We have, we'll have kind of a little mock production system. That won't be where we do the majority of the production, but just to give the clientele the ability to kind of get the feel for it and everything. And then we want to build a nice, kind of like a wedding venue. So be kind of a barn-type theme where people could come in and have events and overlooking the beautiful organs. We'd probably go ahead and plant another four or five acres to the north end of it. So again, it's got the vineyard view and that kind of thing. And then on the west side, it would be more of the heavy lifting. You know, the wine-making, the actual production, crushing, distilling, and all the shipping and that kind of thing. So it'd be a little more activity there. So we would want to keep it away from kind of the retail space. And then also, a big consideration is we want to keep that for parking as well because the last thing that we want to have is people parking on the side, both sides of the road. So we will, we will have an abundance of parking that would probably be about three times what is required so we don't run into the issues of clogging up that artery for the people who live there year-round. So it's, that's pretty much it in a nutshell.
Thank you. Questions for the applicant?
Yeah. First question, did you say you were going to put parking on the west side of the road?
There will be plenty of, there'll be excess parking, correct?
Okay, and with the production facility on the west side and the retail facility on the east side, how do you propose to move product across Picacho Hills Drive, which I believe is a relatively busy thoroughfare?
Well, I mean, most of our production would be outgoing. I mean, we would have, you know, cases that come across, but I mean, no different than driving from your truck over here to go check over here. I mean, whether you have, you know, 50 cases of wine in the back of your truck and drive over there to deliver it versus just go over there and check, you know, it's not going to be a daily back-and-forth kind of thing from a delivery standpoint, so.
And you'll have people walking across the road?
No.
To the parking lot, to the winery? No?
No.
Well, if you have parking on the west side overflow parking?
For events, yes. But on daily, daily production and that kind of thing, minimal.
So have you thought about what provisions you're going to make for pedestrian crossings on Picacho Hills Drive?
Not particularly. I mean, when we start engineering it, then we will get into that. But we will, we will meet all, all safety requirements needed.
Let me, let me just, this is a personal opinion.
Okay.
I like the idea of wineries in general. I agree with what the staff said about promoting agritourism. And I think they are becoming more popular in the valley. Also, that Mesia Valley is designated by the federal government as a wine region, which is important to us because it raises the quality, potential for quality of the wine. But I'm concerned about this, this crossing of the road and having people walk across, having vehicles crossing. I'm just wondering why the DOT didn't flag that. That seems like a potential, I mean, Picacho Hills Drive is a busy road, and people drive fast on it. So I'm, I just want you to know that I have a concern about that.
Okay. I don't think that if we developed it with one business over here and another business that weren't related, I don't know if you would get, you know, much more cross-traffic. You'd still have to deal with that in a safe, efficient manner.
All right, by the way, are you planning to put any kind of exit on Picacho Avenue?
I don't, that'll, that'll be, that'll kind of come out on engineering. But I don't think on the west property that we will be able to because there's a gas riser kind of thing that the Rio Grande just put in. So I don't think that there would be enough access for that. So, but I'm not sure that's, you know, we'll have to find that out when we engineer. And lastly, I don't have any plans of, we've got to get to about 80 acres of grapes before I will, you know, build this. So, you know, it's going to be three, four, or five years before we can actually do this, you know, start the construction.
I guess what I'm curious about is you on this property to the north?
Yes.
And why you didn't propose that for the production facility, which would have eliminated all these issues of cross-road traffic or pedestrian traffic, even?
Well, we're going to try and keep that agriculture. So that, and the front seems more consistent with, you know, everything fronting Picacho, or the bulk of everything is either C2 or industrial. So that was, you know, my logic on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bannister?
Yes, ma'am.
On what side of the road will you be putting your bonded area? And can you tell me how many parking spaces you've already got planned on that east side?
We haven't gotten into design at all. But, I mean, with nine acres and our building would probably be less than 20,000 square feet. So, I mean, we have, what we'll do is we'll figure out what we need for parking. We'll probably double that for peak times and then plant the rest in grapes. So I don't have that calculation.
So you'll be doing the double parking requirement on the east side? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
And the bonded area, will that be on the east side?
The what?
The bonded area where you will store your wine?
Well, no, that'll be on the west side. The bulk of our production will be on the west side. That won't be open to the public or anything like that, so.
The reason I ask is that if you have a bonded area on that side, on that east side, then that minimizes this concern of traffic back and forth in bringing cases of wine across the road.
It's a very good point, very good point. And, you know, in our, in our design, that may be, you know, valuable to do. We're working with Jasper up at Noisy Water, and he's kind of given us, we're neophytes in the actual, you know, production part of it. So he's kind of holding us by the hand and everything. So that may, that may be the best route to go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions of the applicant? Yeah, I know you're part of the applicant. You need to be sworn in.
Yeah.
Good morning. Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Steven Green, 3093 Rio Grande Salute.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Yeah, speak into the mic, please. Don't do like I do.
So just to kind of clarify some stuff. So the parking is more for the employee parking on that side. So that way, the people in production aren't utilizing and occupying the parking spaces for the winery. That, not, in other words, we're not having people crossing the road that are at the winery. I just want to clarify that. That's what that's for. Because you will need parking for them also, and of course, for trucks and everything else to do their facilities. So that way, that operations operates off that side of the road. The only time they would be doing it is dropping scheduled pickups. And like I said, there wouldn't be much to have to get across the road, I don't think, at that point. So just to kind of clarify what kind of parking we're talking about. I think that might be some of the confusion there. The other thing is, is if you were to go back a few slides, you can see where we've kind of made a very rough proposal. Again, we're at the infancy, you know, very infancy of this right now. It's not 100% thought out as far as the thing. But you can see that there are some parking already figured out for the winery itself based on its designation. So that would be your typical parking for that event center area. And then, of course, with the options to do overflow parking up into the upper acreage that's on that side of the road to keep people from having to cross the road. Because that piece of area could be done as overflow parking also, into the ag land if we have to. So that's kind of the idea behind that. So that's why you see it open-ended up towards the, I guess it would be the west, northwest side, right there.
So let me, let me be clear. You're saying overflow parking would be on the?
It would be on the site that you actually see on this side of the west, on the east side of the road. See how it's open-ended, see the parking design lots, how they open-end to each side? That would be for open-ended parking on that side for the people that are utilizing the winery. The parking that's on this side is just for production. Like what he's trying to say is for people that are actually in the operations of production, not for the overflow for the people in the winery, if that makes sense. Does that help clarify better?
Yep, thank you.
All right, thanks. I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Other questions to the applicant? Okay. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Welcome to the public. You have?
Steven Mandell.
Just to let you know, you, there will be a timer. You will be limited to one minute on your comments because of the number of people here to speak. One minute.
Good morning. Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Steven Mandell, 6756 Brightview Road, Las Cruces.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the PNZ, I ask you to deny this petition for C2. It's not about a winery. It's not about all the things that Scott mentioned that sound great. It's about zoning C2. And I, just to tell you about me, I have 26 years of public service as a councilman, as a mayor pro temp, as a plan commissioner, and a Lake County Board Member, where we serve 740,000 people. So I do have experience. This is spot zoning. Because of the time, I'm just going to go through the uses that can, will be allowed there that aren't allowed now. Tell everybody what they are. A gas station, retail facility up to 10,000 square feet, mini-storage unit, bar, hub, tavern, wine tasting room, nightclub, automobile garages, painting or bodywork, restaurant, bakery, catering service, entertainment facility, hotel and motel, recreational vehicle park, office, general and small, cannabis retailer, commercial laundry, convenience store, construction yard, equipment sales, storage, semi-truck parking, theater, sports stadium, auction yard, animal hospital, kennel, medical research, wine tasting room and winery, grounds transportation terminal, among many others that are against our development and would work against it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lyndon Mandell. Please state your name and address for the record.
Lyndon Mandell, 6756 Brightview Road, Las Cruces.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Thank you.
I worry that our unique ear- I worry that our unique area of Pecatito Hills will change dramatically with C2 zone change and visually unpleasant structures such as storage units. I worry about more crime and traffic coming into our limited street access in and out. Maybe we'll get a new sign at the light. There's been a burned out one for the five years since I moved into town. I'd have to tell my friends to make a right at the burned out piece of metal up on the pole. Pecatito Hills is home to many artists who generously donate to fundraisers in town. We volunteer. We raise money for Casa de Pellegrinos. There are 40-something animal nonprofits in town, all managed and mostly run by volunteers. I myself am a new board member of Pecatito Hills Property Owners Association. I volunteer weekly at the community foundation maintaining their interior plants. I am now the Director of the Animal Companions of Las Cruces Advisory Board, and we just put six vets in town and raised $60,000 to help them offset their tuition debt. I guess that's all I can say, but I had a lot more. Thank you.
Bill Westfall. Good, good morning. Please state your name and address for the record.
Bill Westfall, 4900 West Pecatito Avenue.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, for your time. I just had a couple of questions, just, just to clarify. I read through the packet to the best of my ability. I had a, like I said, we, we butted up to the west side of the, the proposed building there. I'm the guy who does the Christmas lights for all my Pecatito Hills friends. So anyway, you know, the view, as we talked about, is, is very important. And one of my questions was.
Speak into the, closer to the mic, please.
I'm sorry.
Speak closer to the mic, please.
One of my questions was, the, the production facility building, it was mentioned 20,000 square feet possibly. I don't really know how big that is, but I mean, it seems big to me. And then I was wondering about how tall the proposed buildings on the winery side, special event side, and the production facility was. Seven seconds. Oh, and the hours, the proposed hours. And is it, we going to have like concerts there, like big venues?
Okay. I'd ask the applicant.
Thank you.
Regarding the specific, regarding the specific questions in terms of height of building itself, that's still something to be engineered?
Yes. We don't have specific, you know, designs, but I would imagine we'll stay within two stories. It's typically very expensive to build three stories, especially when you have so much land to build out. As far, as far as events go, I think, you know, we would have weddings and, and that kind of thing. If there were going to be anything else, you know, we have to get a, a special use permit from the county anyway. So there would be some criteria to be met there. So does that, does that answer everything?
Thank you. Commissioners Ernieak. Excuse me.
Sorry. I was just going to tell him where his house is. We were gonna, you know, we're looking at putting the production on the north side. So that wouldn't, wouldn't affect y'all's view at all.
All right, thank you.
He also asked about hours of operation.
Yeah, well, there's not going to be, this isn't a bar, so it's not going to be open. You know, we would probably start off with it till about eight and then make, make adjustments accordingly. I would say if we were going to adjust, it would be closing a little earlier. It's going to be a challenge to, to get people from in town to come out there, that kind of thing. So it's not going to be operated remotely like a bar whatsoever. There'll be no late hours. I mean, at all.
So he also asked about concerts. And whether you were going to have concerts.
I, I, I don't think that venue would lend itself to a concert at all. So I don't, I don't.
So, full disclosure, I worked at Rio Grande Winery for three years.
Okay.
They have music. I, Sombrantigua does too, I think. And I think even Mesa Vista once in a while has music. Are you planning on having any performances?
I'm sure there'll be, you know, like with the wedding, you know, there'll be DJs or, or maybe some live bands or something like that. But to, to bring Hank Williams Jr. in and, and having a concert, I don't think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chair, real quick, I think one other question, too, was height requirements. And just to put it in perspective, D1L, the building height requirement is 35 feet max. Under C2, the principal building height is 40 feet. So there's only a five foot difference between D1L and C2.
Yeah, talking five feet.
Two, two stories.
Forty feet.
On the height?
Okay.
Yeah, 40. Gene Miller. Good morning. Please state your name and address for the record.
Gene Miller, 1330 Vista del Cerro in the county here.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
Thank you.
So 30 years I've lived on the west Mesa, so you can imagine the changes I've seen. You all have seen the same thing. And I'm not, not against progress at all, but progress without planning is chaos. And I offer in evidence Loman and Tellshore, Salem Colony and Pecatito Avenue. We don't need that kind of deal on Pecatito Hills Drive. And I don't know why you got Pecatito Avenue right there that's already zoned, um, commercial. Why not build there? Why junk up Pecatito Hills Drive? We've already seen problems with Salem Colony and, and Pecatito Hills Avenue. That just gets completely congested over the weekend with everything that's going on there. We've seen problems with the one part of commercial building that's already there with the Santa Fe Grill and all that in there, fraudulent building problems. We've seen violent crime. You know, that's what I'm concerned about. I mean, we already have a problem in this community with that as well. So you need to be more planning.
Thank you, sir. Okay, let's, please. How many do we have, Diane?
We have nine.
Okay. Nine? Okay, next.
Chair, there was a couple of members that asked if they could have a few extra minutes of time. They said trying to rush through a minute was, they asked for a little extra time.
I'm sorry, who, and are they representing a group or? Because I noticed, I noticed in the packet, there's a couple, there's a church group and a couple of other groups. I'd, I'd give more time to a group like that, but to individuals, I'm hesitant to add a lot of time.
I'm not sure who's listed as a group or who's not. They're just listed by how they signed up.
Yeah. Okay, well, let, just go by the names and we'll see.
Okay.
I just, you know, the reason for the minute is look at the number of people. And if you have 20 people with two, three minutes apiece, you're, you're sitting for an hour and getting a lot of repetition. And that's what we try to avoid. That's what we try to avoid with this, which is why we set it for a minute. That, that, if, if we see how many people we have here, and then maybe we can adjust it. At this point, I'm not, I'm not prone to adjusting it at this point right now yet. Who's next?
Did you want to go ahead and go?
So we currently have 10 people sent left to, that are speaking.
If I, if we go with two minutes now, then the people who have already spoken, like the lady here, would need to be able to come up for another minute. I've told the people, okay? Let's get this resolved. The reason we're going for a minute is look around you at the number of people here. Not everyone here has signed up to speak. Not everyone here has signed up to speak, so we can revisit it now that we have a number of people who have signed up. And for people who are under the one minute, who have already spoken, like the lady here, I'd be willing to give them another minute to come up and finish what they're saying. But let's just keep it, keep it calm, okay? There's a lot of people here. This is a controversial issue. And let's just take it easy, okay? Next person, Diane.
Rebecca Klein. Good morning.
Good morning.
Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Rebecca Klein, 6968 Camino Nuevo, Mexico, in Pecatito Hills.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Thank you.
Can you do it in a minute?
I'm going to try. I have a very simple thing to say.
No, I'm, I'm not, I, I don't want to change it yet, if I can help it, so.
Let's hit it and see if I can do it. I am not in favor of blanket C2 zoning, especially now that I've found out that the applicant is not going to build this winery for four or five years. Anything can happen in the next four or five years. And with the property rezoned to C2, we may not see a winery. We may not see a wine production facility at that corner. We may see something else. Some use that, Steve, Steve mentioned, there are so many permitted uses in C2 zoning. I am not in favor of a blanket C2 rezone. I'm more in favor of a mixed use development. I know there's a problem with doing a conditional use in residential because you have to start, you get your permit issued within a year. But there has to be some way to do a PUD or an MUD to try to make sure that what goes on that corner is in fact a winery. And I think we're just too much of a lag time to go from C2 zoning to the actual facility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken Lewis. Good morning. Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Ken Lewis, 8076 Constitution, Pecatito.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I, I echo the, the previous person. I am concerned about the four-year or whatever time lag there might be at, it's my understanding, I'm, I'm not against drinking or anything, but I know that alcohol consumption is going down. And this might not be a business, a viable business four or five years from now, if you follow the tobacco industry and how publicity ended that, fortunately. And I am concerned about this. On the sign on the road on Pecatito Hills, on, excuse me, on, on Pecatito, it said, a range of commercial activities. That's exactly on the, on the sign. That's what bothered me. I do not want, I not, I am not in favor of having to go by commercial enterprises. I think Pecatito Hills is somewhat of a sanctuary, and we should presume as much as we could, starting at, well, starting at Pecatito and other places in, in Las Cruces. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mona Charney. Good morning. Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Mona Charney, and I live at 10111 Catalonia Court.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Thank you.
Commissioners, thank you.
Good morning.
I would normally embrace anything that enhanced our community, but I'm absolutely not convinced that this request for rezoning does that. To repeat what Steve has said and Rebecca has said, I am not averse to the possibility of a winery. But what if the winery doesn't work out? And this individual has to sell it, this applicant sells it to somebody else, who then has the opportunity to build a four-story hotel or an RV park? And I would ask the commission to consider how you would feel if someone put those kinds of industrial blights at the entrance of your village. I don't object to development. I would love for it to enhance our community, but you are the protectors and guardians of our lifestyle. And C2 zoning opens a floodgate for all manner of zoning that would not benefit the quality of life of this very special community. And I ask you to take that role seriously and ask the applicant to consider the other options like permit, special use permits, and C1 zoning that would give us some guardrails and protections. Commission, thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Commissioner, I went over time, but I'd like to say that we all need two minutes.
Thank you. And that's where the extra minute comes in, is with all the clapping.
I apologize. I'm not sure if it's Don Wilson or Dan Wilson. Don, thank you. Good morning. Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Don Wilson. I live at 6725 Desert Blossom Road in, in Pecatito.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So my name is Don Wilson. I am the past president for Butterfield Ridge Two Homeowners, where there's 54 homes. It's a gated community up in Pecatito Hills. And, you know, when we first saw the request for zoning change, you know, it, it actually looked really cool, what you guys are going to put in, right? With the winery and vineyards. And I think the biggest concern is that C2 opened, like the previous three comments, is C2 just opens it up to almost anything, right? And so if you decided not to put the winery in, then it would be zoned C2, right? So that's the biggest concern that our neighborhood had. So thank you.
Thank you.
Richard McMaster.
Richard McMaster, 1606 Caia Murillo, Las Cruces, Pecatito Hill.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
Sure.
Thank you.
This is information looked up right here. It's real easy. New Mexi, and I'm, I'm a retired farmer from the Pecos Valley.
Sir, please, sir, please come up and speak into the mic.
The mic.
I'm a retired farmer from the Pecos Valley, so I know all about heiny whiny.
Sir, would you please talk to the commissioners?
Please, not the audience.
Oh, to you guys?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
One of the ones making the decision here, not the rest of you.
So, so I know about, so looking up the information, New Mexico is the oldest place where winery started, 1629 with Spanish monks. Also, New Mexico went from 2,200 acres to 7,000 acres there. And then boom, it went down. You can look it up. It has a high failure rate. So it went down to 700 acres. Also, your access, you have your access on, on, the Pecatito Road going in. And so that's where we're all driving and they're turning in and out to that winery. That's chaotic. Come down to, to, to Pecatito Avenue. So there's 14 red flags on this deal. And, and, and everything he came up here, he's like, oh, in four years, or we're not sure, we're not sure. Well, when you're going to do this to us, you just need to have a plan.
Thank you, sir.
Ed Howell. Good morning. Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Ed, Ed Howell, 1626 Caia Murillo.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Full disclosure, I like wine. So you'll have to excuse me for that. But the concern I have is, is the same concern, I think. But the concern I have is the same concern, I think, that most of the people have this morning, which is the inability to have confirmed that this is going to be a winery down the line. We don't know in four years what's gonna happen. You know, that's the only road in and out of our area, really. And if we look up in four years and there's a dispensary there, we're gonna be very unhappy. And so I would ask you to consider that when you go through this process of approval. And the other big question I have, honestly, is would you tear the trees down that are on the road there? I mean, I really like those trees, and I'm sure the rest of y'all do. It's just part of the ambiance of living where we live. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Randy McMillan.
Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Randy McMillan, 4902 Briaris Court.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, my notes just went away. I might like a little more time. I do represent the wine industry in a way, as well as I'm a winery owner. I own the Rio Grande Winery, and I know Scott very well. I know his intentions. He's already planted a bunch of grapes near where I am, and I know that is a costly thing. That is, his intentions are to put in a winery. I also know he is well-financed. There's not gonna be any problems with what he does going under. The wine business is down slightly, I will grant that. The champagne business is up significantly. And we make both, and he will make both as well. I'd just like to say that, from a neighborhood standpoint, I have never had a neighbor of the Rio Grande Winery come to me and say anything but "thank you." They love us being there. They are our most frequent customers. They come, they don't have to drive far home. Many of them walk, some of them ride a horse and come up and park their horse. May I have just a couple more minutes? Or not a couple, maybe one more minute? Ready, please?
Ten seconds.
As far as deliveries go, we get a delivery every two weeks, one. So him bringing wine back and forth across from the production facility, it would be not very often. Driving time to amenities, man, Pecatril Hills needs some more amenities, and I know you want to be careful what they are, but that is gonna increase everybody's property's values out there if they have more amenities out there.
Okay. Sir, we have to wrap it up.
Okay. More wineries raise all boats, and we would really welcome him doing this, so just wanted to let you know.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Gerald Carson, and I live at 6615 Butterfield Ridge Drive.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I've, we have around 1,500 homes in Pecatril Hills, and every one of those homeowners likes to have a nice front entrance. What we're talking about here is the front entrance to Pecatril Hills. We have beautiful trees, which one gentleman alluded to, and we have a beautiful monument. And we're talking about replacing that with some buildings, and I've already heard about, I can imagine people walking across, and it's just, and that's a very busy intersection. And I think there's certainly gotta be other places, other locations on Pecatril Avenue other than at our front door. That is our front door to Pecatril Hills. So I certainly ask that we not get rid of our front door and replace it with some buildings and traffic and whatever else they're proposing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Paul McGlory. Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Paul Muliori, 1600 Vista Quesa, in Pecatril Hills.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I see three problems with this proposal. The first of which is traffic. I just don't see that this development can be done without introducing serious traffic problems. More than half of the time, when you come down Pecatril Hills Drive, you're waiting for traffic light. And now you're gonna add a whole lot more traffic. That's problem number one. Several years ago, the county sponsored a traffic study identifying deficiencies in Pecatril Hills. Nothing was ever done about that. You can imagine how those deficiencies could grow with the increase of traffic. One problem that I think has been overlooked is noise. One of the attributes of Pecatril Hills, it's a very quiet place to live. So quiet that if an agricultural implement is being used at night, you hear it all the way up at the end of Pecatril Hills. Now imagine a wedding celebration that's going until 10:00 or 12:00 at night with a band playing. You're gonna destroy that ambiance, and I don't know a solution for that. If this was just a proposal for a vineyard and a winery, it would probably be welcomed. But the concern is for unbridled, uncontrolled, commercial development. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Gary Levy, 6968 Camino Nuevo, Mexico.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mine's more a question than a statement. You talked about having 80 acres worth of grapes being grown there. How do you propose moving those grapes from the growing area to the production areas? Are they gonna be full of tractors and trailers going up and down the road? And what's the length of their time span during harvesting? And secondly, having only one entrance into each facility on the east and the west side, it seems like that's gonna cause a whole lot more traffic, and it seems like they don't want to do a department transportation analysis to have an entrance on the 70. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let the applicant answer that question.
We will have, probably on the east side, we'll have an entrance on Pecatril, and then on Pecatril Hills Drive as well. And what was the other question? I'm sorry, I don't know.
I'd like you to comment on a couple of things.
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, there was the comment about the front entrance and what you'd be doing on the front entrance, and then harvest traffic is the last one.
Okay. Absolutely. The trees are beautiful. You know, we would definitely, you know, we would probably landscape to enhance that because, I mean, that is beautiful, and we want to keep that for sure. As far as harvesting goes, with the amount of acreage that'll be there, maybe take three days once a year. So it's not, and, you know, all the activity will be within, and then you load up your crates, and then we'll zip them over, and then that's it, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Gray. Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Bill Gray, 6668 Vista Hermosa, Pecatril Hills.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give today as a truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Thank you.
The important thing about zoning change applications is that you consider the worst-case scenarios. It would be one thing if this were an application to operate a winery and associated facilities. It's not. It's an application to zone 18-plus acres to C2. Approval of the application will prevent any C2 use on either of these parcels. And those, I believe, are not compatible with most of them, with the entrance to Pecatril Hills and that area in general. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have anyone further.
Okay, that's it. There were a couple of people. Let's hear from you first, and then there were a couple of people that needed to finish things, and we'll allow another minute each for two or three people there. Go ahead.
Great. Just listening to all the people, and just would like to address some of the comments on that, if I could. So, yeah, so first of all, Stephen had mentioned spot zoning, things being out of context. Albert, could you pull that slide up of the pictures of up and down Pecatril? Maybe I don't need to even have the pictures, but I could say, I could speak to it really quick. You know, is it out of context? There's an I zoning right to the east of it. If you grow up and down Pecatril, is there not all the things that he just stated already under those uses? Are they not right across the street from this? Those are all uses that are already in context with the area. I'd also like to point out that the main Pecatril is a highway, so we are building against a highway. Okay? So we're not building on a main or a private arterial. This is a main road made for that kind of traffic. Is it not? Just to kind of answer that, the other thing would be is, normally, everyone keeps saying, speaking to the design purposes of it. As a builder, designer, developer, you don't start spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on plans without knowing you got the zoning correct. Because how would we know if this is even gonna be able to get done? So you need to know the zoning. So we're saying, you're asking us to put the cart in front of the horse a little bit. Can't do that. That's why we're here. This is ground one, step one. That's why we're here. So, you know, somebody said that you guys are the protectors of Pecatril. I don't think you're the protectors of Pecatril. I think you're the protectors of the county, right? So that goes for all the constituents of the county. So I want to remind you of that. That's just more than just the people that live in Pecatril. Granted, this is what you're speaking to, but it is for all the other people in Pecatril, and that means the development of Pecatril, the economic growth of Pecatril, the west side of Las Cruces. And I think that's something that's important, that the business and economic growth of Las Cruces is trying to push economic growth to the west side, but it's already hard as it is to get it to the west side. This is something that could help spur that. One last thing is, you know, talking to, would it create any more traffic than what's already there? Well, I mean, currently it is agricultural, right? So how would you be addressing it right now? Is there not, would any other crop yield any different kind of traffic? I mean, you're gonna still have the same tractors, the same noise, you're gonna have the same amount of workers in the fields doing what they gotta do, right? If this was cotton, alfalfa, chili, onions, I mean, we've seen, you know, they all do it right now, and during certain times, it does get busier, right? And they have to address it. But I think that's something we do. As far as the noise goes, I think making sure everybody does realize it's just the front nine acres against the highway, not the additional 70 all the way up to Pecatril. So I don't know how much more of a noise buffer we would need, but 70 acres is pretty decent in my mind that would help keep the noise down. And again, if we're talking about just a guy on the back porch like the other wineries have that are playing some guitar music, or maybe the dope band or something out there, I don't think it would be loud enough to sit there and say this is gonna be rock concert level noises ever at the winery. So just wanted to answer those and clarify.
Let me ask you something, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
The comment that Mr. Bannister made about four or five years before construction begins, assuming you get the zoning, why would it take so long?
Well, one, you'd want to make sure that your wine production is gonna be fruitful enough to get that going, which I think it would be since he's already started on it. So you have to let the winery get going. The other thing is just the development of actually the plan sets and everything else, right? And you're gonna have to go through a lot of stuff with the county engineering, DOT possibly, there's a lot of unknowns in there. So to be safe, I think that's why he's saying that, not trying to overpromise and underdeliver is what the reasoning behind it is. Just to get the plan sets alone could take up to a year to two years, and then before you even start breaking ground and doing all the other stuff, it could even be longer, right? We have a lot of stuff we need to figure out. Sewers, septics, how is that all gonna take place? There's a lot of hurdles we're gonna have to cross within the development process itself. And that would be the same with any other development that goes on that property. They're all gonna be able to have to, like, look into a lot of that stuff. So I think four to five years is just a safe bet. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Any other questions? I've got a question for staff. What I'm hearing is a major concern is the C2 zoning would allow for a lot of things other than the winery. So if we go ahead and approve this, maybe you guys can talk a little bit about the follow-up and how we'll stay on top of the fact that we approved a C2 zone for a winery and business and preventing other things to go in there. I know it has to do with best practices.
Mr. Chair. Albert, can we conditionally approve it to the winery?
I think it's under your purview. I mean, to do that, I mean, like I said, I mean, just the last slide of my PowerPoint basically stated that, you know, this commission does have the right to either approve, conditionally approve, or deny the zone change request.
I mean, it seems to me when Mesa Vista came before us, we were actually limiting the number of people that could use the winery at one time. And the winery wasn't, was never built there. They moved way south. But it seems to me that the major objection to this is the open-ended C2 zoning. So if we, if we have the authority to conditionally approve it to the winery, bistro, event center, and associated vineyards, that seems to remove many of the objections. Doesn't minimize the traffic. That's one that you guys would have to figure out.
Mr. Chair, if I can maybe make a comment.
I swear, Ewan.
Yes.
Good morning. Please state your name and address for the record.
Christina Ainsworth, 845 North Mortel Boulevard.
Do you affirm the testimony you're about to give as the truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
Thank you.
Christine, would you identify yourself to the audience?
Yes, I am the Director of Community Development. I just wanted to comment that there is case law that if you limit a zoning district to just one use or just a handful of uses, it could be perceived as that zoning district being inappropriate. It would be appropriate, though, if you wanted to limit some of the uses. In other words, eliminate some of the uses that are less compatible. But limiting it to just one use, I don't think would be a direction that you should go.
Okay.
And Commissioners, as part of your packet, I did include all the cheat sheets for, you know, C1 and C2 and what uses are allowed under the existing zoning designation, C1 and the proposed C2.
And of course, if you went with a special use permit in D1L, that has to be renewed every year, and we're gonna be back here all the time. Okay?
So do we have the land use matrix, Andy?
I don't have the full matrix, just the screenshot of the wineries. But as part of your packet, you do have the uses that are allowed under C1 and C2.
Any further comments or questions from the commission?
I guess this is for staff.
Thanks, Albert.
It sounds like while we can't actually designate a single use, could we approve it with the, with the condition that it would be something that would promote agritourism?
Yes, I think that would be agreeable.
Because I think that kind of gets us pretty close to some of the concerns. To me, it doesn't make any, I think it's going to be hard for us to go through and list all the things that we don't want. Okay? Because it's quite a long list of things that are possible on a C2. So, I'm just wondering if that's an appropriate thing. And I'd welcome any comments from the other commissioners about this.
Agritourism sounds like traffic. And that's one of the major concerns that we have about that intersection because it's been stated many times, we wait at that stoplight, cars lining up, lining up, agritourism, traffic.
Thank you, sir. We've heard that. We hear you.
Chair, and just real quick, Chair, I think there were still some other people that were requesting that additional one minute.
I'm sorry.
There were members of the public that were requesting an additional one minute.
Yes, there are. Okay, some of the members of the public who have already signed up for additional minute, starting here with Mr.
Stephen Mandell. Did you want, was it just the first four that spoke? Is that what you're?
Yeah, just the first, the first four.
Okay.
And you've already been sworn in.
Okay, thank you.
So, you're getting one minute.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing's guaranteed in life except for one thing, and most of us up at Picacho Hills are approaching that one thing pretty soon. This is five years off. The petitioner can go for a special use permit under the existing zoning, and all these questions that everybody answered would have to come forward in their special use five years from now. Where are we going to be five years from now? What's the traffic going to be five years from now? This is spot zoning. The highway is a different neighborhood than Picacho Hills Drive. Picacho Hills Drive is part of development. It's been very successful, where a lot of us chose to live to be away from the urban environment, to have a place where we can spend our last years relaxing and enjoying ourselves and enjoying the natural environment around us. Please don't ruin it. Deny this petition and let the petitioner wait the five years with his winery and come for a special use permit under the existing zoning.
Thank you.
Linda Mandell.
Mr. Chairman. Albert, I'd like to ask a question of you. Just a second. What, what are the problems with having access from Picacho Avenue?
There are no issues, but I mean, New Mexico DOT, what they commented was that if the access was to be off of Picacho Avenue, that they would just have to get a driver permit from them. And that could involve getting a TIA or an SCA as part of their supplemental. So, as far as I know, there are no issues. They were just wanting them to obtain a driver permit and do whatever they have to do to get that, to get that permit from them.
So, they could get an access from Picacho Avenue and still have access between their two properties from Picacho Hills for the operation itself, but not for public entrance? Is that doable?
It would have to be, I mean, I think it's doable, but ultimately, it's New Mexico DOT who has the final word.
It would have to what?
It's New Mexico DOT who would have the final, the final word. So, access off of Picacho Avenue would be up to New Mexico DOT. Access off of Picacho Hills Drive would be county engineering.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to finish that we are an army of volunteers that give our money and time to improve services in this town. We all worked, we retired. I am busy every day going to meetings, doing things to enhance my life and other people's lives here. Macia offers everything I need. I do not drive in Las Cruces at night. I will take Fair Acres Road into Macia and back, but I've had too many episodes where I was almost killed. And then my tree trimmer, Donnie, who was a Picacho Hills resident, was killed at that intersection four years ago. And my other friend, Mary, was seriously injured, and then they packed up and moved to Arizona. There's many instances, I mean, I should go to the DOT meetings, 294, where you cross the Picacho Avenue to make that left turn by the river, so many accidents there, people going across to Road Runner. That's really it. Macia has a wine bar, they have a movie theater, they have restaurants, we have Save Mart. We don't need this. Please deny it.
Bill Westfall. Okay. And Jean Miller. And Rebecca.
So, that's it.
Was Jean, did Jean want additional time? No? Okay, so the last one would be Rebecca Klein.
Hello again. I just have some questions. And it concerns the zoning. Is there any way that this property could be zoned MUD, mixed-use development? Or you could establish a PUD, a planned unit development for it? Or a conditional use on existing residential land? I know that the problem with a conditional use in residential land is it expires after a year. Is there some way that it could be handled in such a way that they have time and aren't wasting their money coming up with a use for that land, which I'm in favor of the winery? I think it's a great idea. But what I am concerned about is C2 zoning. So, is there any other zoning district that could be utilized that would give the applicants time to come up with their plan and get it approved and go through the permitting process, but not a blanket C2 zone change? That's my question.
Thank you.
It was the only first five people served for their commission.
Okay. I'm going to cut off the public input. I appreciate it, people, but, you know, we have to put some limits on things. I'm sorry.
I didn't address dark skies.
Yeah.
Dark sky community.
There we go. Okay, commissioners, comments, questions?
Commissioner Costa. Mr. Chair, we're not ready for a motion yet, right?
There's not been a motion yet.
Okay.
We, as commissioners, are entrusted with the safety and general welfare of the public one, okay? In 2010, I was a member of the ETZ Board, and we denied a C3 zone change, okay? Given all of that, when you have the gallery that really is concerned about how we're going to be able to get along with business and the general public, we also have to take into consideration any and all comments made regarding not only traffic and all of that, it's just a general condition is how we're going to be able to substantiate the case and the motion that will be coming up. And so, Mr. Bannister, I hope you understand that the conditions that we may be placing on your approval, or maybe even the denial of the case, okay? You have to understand that we have to take the whole area, not just your particular case, okay? So, I guess if there's any further discussion, it's up to you, Mr. Chair.
It's up to me.
Mr. Chair, I just want to, it seems to me that there's, there's not a ton of opposition to the idea of a winery. What I'm hearing is there, is that there's a lot of uncertainty about the zoning. There's a lot of concern about, especially when they were talking about four or five years. Because things can change. The economy can change, the viability of a winery might change. And so, I understand everybody's concern, but at the same time, I understand from the business side, it's going to be real hard for these gentlemen to put a lot of money into something that may get, that zoning may be denied after they've put a lot of money into architectural designs, everything. So, we're caught in a situation, and that's one of the reasons why I wanted to know if there was some way that we could approve this with the condition that it would be a winery. I think that answers some of, some of the concerns. I don't know that it answers all of them, but I think it answers some of them. So, at this point, I just think we've got, we basically have a dilemma that we're, that's going to be hard to resolve to everybody's satisfaction. But I do think that if there was, if there was some guarantee, and I know, I know we can't do that, but if there was some guarantee that they, they would follow through on the plans, I think that would alleviate some of the concern.
I have a question for staff.
Commissioner. Go ahead.
I just wanted to know if we're able to, if we approve this, have a condition that the entrance, the main entrance for the winery would be on Picacho? Like, can we add that condition so that it has to go through DOT?
I think it's something that, you know, is within the power of this board. My only concern would be that potentially through the building review process or when we have pre-application meetings, I know that they're going to need secondary access, you know, at least for emergency purposes. So, adding, you know, one or two driveways off of Picacho Hills would probably, you know, that's something that New Mexico DOT would have to deal with. But I know that they're at least going to need two, two access points for the, for the winery itself.
Would that, would that entrance be too close to that light?
It could be.
That would be a concern.
I mean, that's up to DOT.
But that would be up to New Mexico DOT.
It's not, it's not the entrance. The entrance probably could be put in with an exit lane. It's the, it's the entrance back onto Picacho that would be a problem because it's so close to the light. You couldn't get up to speed.
Yeah.
Teresa, are you okay? Did you have another question? Okay. Janine, do you have a definition of agriculture?
Yeah. Other questions from the commission? Commissioner Costa. He's all set.
Albert, you can just read it. I want to see if there's a definition for agriculture and tourism.
So, the definition, we don't have a definition per se for agriculture. It's defined under farming and ranching. It says, "Any use of land for the growing and harvesting of crops, the open range grazing of livestock, or irrigated pasture for grazing livestock for sale or profit, or uses that are directly ancillary to these on-farm scalable activities, which is the exclusive or primary use of the lot, including processing, packaging, and warehousing." Do we have?
Doesn't specifically say manufactured, does it?
Do we have one for tourism?
That does say.
Processing and packaging would be the winery.
That would be winery.
Okay, so this says, "Agritourism, a form of commercial enterprise that links agricultural production and/or processing with tourism to attract visitors onto a farm, ranch, or other agricultural businesses for the purposes of entertaining and/or educating the visitors and generating income for the farm, ranch, or business owner." So, Christine, we need your wise counsel on this. What happens if we limit it to that definition?
You know, I think it's still too limiting because the zoning district has, you know, a wide variety of uses available. But what you want to, what you want to steer away from is making it so limited that it makes it look like the zoning itself is not compatible.
So, so what happens if I go through the list of permitted uses and I pick 33 that are objectionable out of about 70? Would that be acceptable?
Yeah, I mean, that still leaves you with a pretty broad list of uses.
I mean, it leaves cemetery, it leaves research facilities, office, offices, I took out light manufacturing. I mean, I don't know if we need to go to this, do we need to go to this level of detail?
You know, there's, there's different options. I've seen conditions based on, you know, generally stating eliminating any automotive uses, any uses that, you know, such as semi-parking, the ones that are more, or I would, I would say least compatible with, with surrounding properties. But you don't necessarily have to list every single use. You could, you could think of general categories that you would want to limit from the approval.
It eliminates, it eliminates a lot?
Question for staff. And you guys know how I feel about transect zones. Going through the, the matrix.
And they said yes.
The wineries, the type of operation we're talking about is permitted in a T5 transect zone. Is taking what's permitted in a C2 and permitted in a T5, is there a big overlap there? Or changing it from a T5 eliminate the idea of, eliminate the problems of having the C2 zone and all those other uses should something happen here with the winery?
I mean, off the top of my head, I don't think I can name all those overlaps. If I was to make a comparison, I think a T5 and a C1 would probably be more closer in uses. A T5 would be what's, would be considered like a little town center within a colonia, like in San Miguel or La Mesa or La Nueva. But I do believe that at least in the T5, you are allowed to have, you know, some retail to some level, office, you know, those kind of uses.
Okay, I just, just looking at the matrix and thinking about transect zones. So, however, a C1 would cover most of the stuff that is in the T5? A C1 would cover the uses on this and still be more restrictive than the C2?
Yeah. And also, commissioners, I mean, I'm just going to throw this out there. I mean, you guys do have the ability to maybe go into closed session to discuss, maybe go down the list of uses, but that is also an option.
Okay. Thank you.
You want to recess for a few minutes and talk about it?
Okay, we have, we're going to have, yes. I've been asked, we're going to have recess for a couple of minutes here. Okay? Thank you. We're going to take a recess. We'll call you when you come back, okay? We'll be back here in a quarter of.
What did I do with that? Cannabis micro-business, auction yard, cannabis micro-business producer, cannabis producer, crematorium, cannabis research or testing laboratory, construction yard, mini storage unit RV and boat storage, and ground transportation terminal.
I second that motion.
Okay. I have a motion for approval, approval of KC 25013 as a C2 with exceptions. Motion by Commissioner Zerniak, second by Commissioner Lear. Discussion on the motion. Guess we covered it all in closed session. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Lear?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Acosta?
Yes.
Vice Chair Zerniak?
Yes.
Chair Zargis?
Yes.
The motion is passed with the vote.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lear, second by Commissioner Zerniak to go into special section or closed session. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Odonk, I'm sorry. Commissioner Lear?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Acosta?
Yes.
Vice Chair Zerniak?
Yes.
Chair Zargis?
Yes.
The motion is passed with the vote of six to zero.
Motion passes unanimously. Administrative approvals. Administrative approvals. No administrative approvals. Staff input?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners. Good morning. So we are working on the Seventh Amendment to the UDC. We are compiling a list.
Can we get everybody to please clear into the lobby?
So we're creating a working copy of what we've noticed needs to be, needs attention. And I don't know if you're interested right now in specifically what we've compiled or, you know, the way we should approach it. But generally, what we do is we get your input and then we bring the proposal forward.
So you'll get our input and we don't have a tentative date on when we will sit down to review?
Yes. We can sit down, I think, in the, the second meeting in September, I think would be good. That'll give us a time to formulate everything, get your ideas, and create the document.
Thank you.
Okay. And I know Dr. Zerniak has some recommendations regarding adding time limitations to special use permits, which is already in the ordinance, by the way. There is a general statement that says, in addition to the conditions of a special use permit, a time limitation on the SUP may be imposed.
So just as a matter of procedure, the recommend, I would like to see the recommendation from staff to include that time limitation.
On all cases, do you think, or just the ones that we foresee as being controversial?
Which one?
On all SUPs? Or just the ones that we foresee as being controversial?
I think on all of them.
Yeah. I know in the past, before the UDC, even before the ETC, it was up to a maximum 25 years for a special use permit. And I don't think that was ever really enforced. It kind of fell by the wayside and that was the problem that we had, which is probably why we don't carry it through to this day.
But now with all the restrictions we have, with surveys, with earthquake, with water, all of this, we need to have a little bit more time for somebody to be able to build their facility.
Yes. And especially extend, allowing an extension to a special use permit, is one thing that we are going to address. One year is a short time period.
It isn't just a question of time. It's a question of whether the individual is following what the special use permit allows them to do. If there's no, you know, if there's no problem, an extension should be granted administratively.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay. Is there anything else that comes to mind that we should address?
That's it.
Or you can email us if you like to.
Okay.
Okay. But yeah, we will bring it forward, second meeting in September.
Janine, I know Bill has some questions about the land use matrix.
I've got, I'll email you those.
Okay.
I've been working on them. I promised Christina an email a couple of weeks ago and I've been working on it and just haven't gotten to it yet.
Okay. So then that'll be plenty of time?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I'll get it to you this week.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you.
Anything else? Commission input?
Public can't think quickly enough to think about what was included. You had criteria, obviously, for eliminating many of those businesses. But what, what was included? We heard so many different kinds of businesses that were planned. And so what was included then?
Well, there's, there's a, in, it would have been nice if you'd had a probably a list up on the screen. In the, in the document, there's a matrix. Go ahead, Albert.
So, yeah, chair, members of the public.